I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Honoring excellence is the next item up. Dallas Ackerman. Everyone's doing good tonight. Yeah, we have a full house and I can't remember a bigger and better honoring excellence. We always get excited for state champions and we have state champions everywhere you look in the room. State champion. State champion. State champion. Steve Anderson, not a state champion. He'll get me back for that. Yeah, wow. Speech Theater and Debate Department had a huge, huge weekend just a few weeks ago down at Springfield. Brought home all kinds of hardware and we're actually even going to recognize a couple of students for a national championship here in just a moment. I thought what I would do is introduce each of these students, one by one, they'll come up, receive their certificate, and then I will have a couple of the coaches come up and say a few words to conclude this. And then, of course, I think Mr. Evans will ask the audience to do something special as well. First, I'm going to introduce Mr. Michael Chapman. Michael, come forward. There's a state champion. Liberty Public Schools recognizes you for winning a state title for Best Actor at the Missouri State High School Activities Association Speech Theater and Debate Championships. Michael Chapman, congratulations. Kenzie Collins. Kenzie, Liberty Public Schools recognizes you for winning a state title for Best Supporting Actress at the Missouri State High School Activities Association Speech Theater and Debate Championships. Congratulations. Ms. Courtney Carr. Liberty Public Schools recognizes you for winning a state title in duet acting at the Missouri State High School Activities Association Speech Theater and Debate Championships. Congratulations. Courtney, you stay here, actually. You get two. Liberty Public Schools recognizes you for your national championship in duet acting at the National Individual Events Tournament of Champions. Congratulations. Noah Graham. Noah, I'm going to keep you up here for two of these. LPS would like to recognize you for winning a state title in duet acting. That's why you're sitting together. You win a duet acting championship at the Speech Theater and Debate Championships, so congratulations on that. Let's keep the... And like Courtney, LPS would like to recognize you for your national championship in duet acting at the National Individual Events Tournament of Champions. Good job. MacGyver Newton. I think some call him Mac. Were you named after the MacGyver TV show?
Yes.
Might date me just a little bit, but I used to enjoy that.
He's never heard that question before.
Liberty Public Schools recognizes you for winning a state championship in U.S. Extemp at the Missouri State High School Activities Association Speech Theater and Debate Championships. Congratulations. And I know we actually have several representatives from the Liberty North High School one-act play, The Elephant Man, in attendance. A few of you would like to come forward. All of you, come on up here and stand with me because we want to make a special presentation to this group. By the way, we're going to take a big group picture before you leave here this evening. Liberty Public Schools recognizes you for winning a state championship in one-act play at the Speech Theater and Debate Championships in Springfield. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you guys for all being here. Unbelievable accomplishment by this group. And I want to thank Aaron Money, Director of Fine Arts, for getting them all here and scheduled here this evening. I also want to introduce Ms. Kim Linger and Sean Nieswanger, the speech and debate coaches, and I will invite them to come forward. Would you guys like to share just a few words?
First off, thanks a lot for inviting us to honor the kids and all the hard work they've had this year. It's been a great season, obviously, for Liberty North Speech and Debate. And just so you get kind of an idea of the overall Misha State Tournament, we had all of these state champions, which is very rare to have that many from one school. We also had five other state finalists, and so Liberty North had more champions, more finalists than any school in the state at the state championships. They don't give a team award, but if they had, I have no doubt that we probably would have won it. So we're proud of these kids. We're also proud of all the other kids that competed at the state tournament and had success there also. I'm going to let Kim talk a little bit about The Elephant Man one-act play and a couple of things.
Hey, guys. I'm going to talk to you just a little bit about The Elephant Man. The director is actually David Young, and he is at Starlight right now because, I don't know if you've heard, but a lot of these kids were involved in our musical, which is up for, how many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen different awards, and our leads are at Starlight tonight rehearsing for their performance, which is Thursday, and we're really hoping the rain goes away. So he sent me here to speak on behalf of him. The show, when we take a show to state, we don't just go and show up and act. They have to build their entire set in front of judges. We bring everything. And that day looked like this afternoon. It was pouring, and we had to move stuff from the van and build the set in front of everybody. And these guys were troopers, and they were fantastic. They made it to finals next day and then won the whole darn thing. So I am so proud of them in taking a classic show like that and did just a fantastic job. So the best one-act in the entire state. Congratulations again. Courtney and Noah were up here a couple of times. They won the state title in duet. Then they also, we hosted a little tournament a couple of weeks ago at Liberty North. It was the National Individual Events Tournament of Champions. We had 1,000 kids at our school from all over the country, from 40 different states, and these two kids won the whole darn thing. So they did a very nice job. I got to actually sneak in, even though I was hosting, and watch their final round. So it's pretty impressive. They've also won some scholarship money, which comes with these activities as well. So thank you so much for having us, and if you guys could just light a candle for Thursday night that the rain goes away, even though we do pretty well in the rain, so maybe it's a good thing. So thank you.
We have a tradition here of honoring our state champions with a standing ovation, so if you would join me. Awesome. Not that the night could get any better, but we are making history tonight as we not only have our LPS Support Employee of the Year with us in person, but we also have our newly crowned LPS District Teacher of the Year together in the same room tonight. How exciting is that? So at this time, I'm going to introduce, and actually if both of them would join me here, we have our Support Employee of the Year, Mr. Marion Hunter-Doss, and our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Courtney Zimke. Join me here, and I'm going to try to embarrass you just for a minute, read a little bit of your bio, your press release. First, Mr. Hunter-Doss, which, by the way, when they came in together, I thought maybe they'd never met, but of course Gail, who works at, many of you know Gail from Alexander Donovan. Gail knew Courtney from the time Courtney was at Donovan, so they all knew each other. Wonderful. No introductions needed. So we start with Mr. Hunter-Doss, and what an event it was. It was a surprise event over at the Support Services Building to announce him as the 2017-18 Support Employee of the Year. Mr. Hunter-Doss has been a loyal Liberty Public Schools employee, serving in the Transportation Department since January of 1985. His duties in the department have ranged from not only a route driver, but also a driver trainer and licensed third-party examiner for the Missouri State Highway Patrol to issue new commercial drivers licenses to drivers. Following a stint as Assistant Transportation Director in '01-02, he returned to driving bus routes, a position he still holds today as he safely transports special needs students. This man is amazing, and another note, away from the Transportation Office and Bus, he keeps himself extremely busy. He is also a pastor at Flack Memorial Christian Union Church in Excelsor Springs. He does it all, and he is going to be a great representative for us as our 17-18 District Support Employee of the Year. So I'm going to introduce Mr. Marion Hunter-Doss.
Thank you. If I'd known public appearances were part of this, I would have declined. It's a privilege to work for Liberty Public School District. Thirty-two years ago, I never thought I'd be here that long, but I don't take this lightly for one reason. I don't do this by myself. It's been a number of people who have sharpened and refined and taught and mentored and been patient with me, and I've tried to pass that on to fellow drivers in the district. Thank you very much.
I meant to ask, have either of you won a state championship? Moving on. It was an exciting afternoon at Warren Hills Elementary, as students packed the gymnasium for an all-school assembly, and it was announced that kindergarten teacher Courtney Zimke had been chosen the 2017-18 Liberty Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Ms. Zimke becomes not only the first from Warren Hills Elementary selected for this honor, it was also a huge day for all kindergarten teachers in Liberty Public Schools as it was the first kindergarten teacher ever selected as LPS Teacher of the Year. Graduated Texas Christian University in 2005, Zimke holds a Bachelor of Science in Education and Master's in Education, so she becomes the 13th Teacher of the Year in Liberty Public Schools. And just like Mr. Hunter-Doss, we think she is going to be an awesome representative, representing not only all of the kindergarten teachers in LPS, but all the teachers around our district. So at this time, introduce Ms. Courtney Zimke.
This wraps up my 12th year of teaching. Eleven of those have been in Liberty Public Schools, and I can't explain enough how extraordinarily blessed and touched and humbled I feel to get to represent the incredible teachers I work with. I met Gail and her family the very first year I taught, and so getting to share this honor with Marion is an especially touching moment for me just because family is everything. Family is what brought me back to Kansas City after I graduated from college. Family is what took me away when my husband was restationed with the Army, and family is what brought us back. We could have moved anywhere in the entire world when he was finally, had completed his Army commitments, and we wanted to come back here because of family, the people, the family, the community, the support of our school board, and just the extraordinary student population of Liberty. I'm blessed to get to start them off at age five, and my oldest class will be graduating next fall, or next spring, as seniors, so it's just a remarkable place to be, and I'm deeply humbled to get to represent all the wonderful things about Liberty. So thank you very much.
Congratulations again to you both. Congratulations to our students, all the state champions. I told you it was going to be a really big night, and we were so fortunate to be surrounded by excellence here tonight. So with that, that concludes honoring excellence for this evening.
Thank you, Dallas. We are going to take a quick break, and then we'll come back for approval of agenda and public comments. If you want to speak to the board this evening, there's a blue card just outside the door, and you can fill it out and turn it in to me. But in the meantime, let's take about six minutes till 25 after 7 to congratulate our honorees.
Were you trading baseball cards out there?
They played the Twins weekend there. Is up there now?
He had Jackie Robinson.
Huh?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Yeah, okay.
Back to work.
All right, next thing up is the approval... The approval of the... The agenda. It says approval of minutes is subject... Okay. So our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Am I in the right place?
Let's do the agenda first on 3.01, 2.03.
I keep trying to click on it.
You just need the agenda and motion to approve as I move. We have approved the agenda as presented.
Yeah, as presented. Yeah, that's what I need.
Scott?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I did not receive any blue cards. Is anyone wanting to speak for public comments? If not, we will press on. Here's the part where I talked about parliamentary procedure. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation regarding, concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member.
I move the board approved consent agenda 3.01 to 6.03.
Second. Scott?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item seven, Board Policies.
Item 7.01, as far as board policies, there are several of them that are provided in this month's MSBA update for you to review upon first read. And so over the course of the next month, we've already started putting this in front of our cabinet as well as Strategic Leadership Team, so we may have some slight changes made, modifications. We'll certainly vet everything with legal counsel before we bring them back to you at our June meeting on June 19th for file approval and recommendation. So again, those are just presented to you this evening for first read.
All right. And unfinished business, starting with district compensation plans.
You'll recall that we've been working on this over the course of the last several months with Team Liberty, appreciate Dr. Vogelar, and Cindy Sullivan's work in helping to kind of walk through this process over the course of the spring semester. Back in April, we provided you with the memo from the superintendent to the board in respect to what we would anticipate with our staff salary recommendations. We have very minor changes to share with you this evening, but I did want to highlight a couple of items, specifically as it relates to the work of the Administrative Salary and Welfare Committee. As you will recall, we contracted with Evergreen Solutions to be able to put this to study and look at how we compare to our peer districts and around the metropolitan area, as well as peers across the state of Missouri. The culminating report is a five-chapter document, of which chapters one through four deal primarily with the methodology and processes utilized in the study itself. And then finally, chapter five is the recommendations that will then be in place for the 2017-2018 school year. The recommendations are finalized. Chapter one through four is currently being proofed with some minor revisions, some cosmetic pieces. So what we're going to do with our salary recommendations for this evening is we're going to pull that item until the finalized report is completed, bring that back to you in June, rather than have you approve something that's not yet finalized, albeit it's just some cosmetic pieces as the Evergreen Company is finalizing all of that. So you'll see that in June. A couple of other items that we had mentioned previously in our recommendation, we did not anticipate any changes or enhancements to the extra-duty miscellaneous stipend and miscellaneous rates of pay schedules. We are, however, providing you a couple of adjustments for next year. The first of which is on the miscellaneous rates of pay salary schedule, specifically related to a title change, and that you'll see a new title captured that speaks to the role of substitute teachers that are providing long-term services at the master's level, so that is a minor change. In addition, looking to try to recruit both in quantity and quality, summer temporary help in our warehouse department, as well as grounds and maintenance, in adjusting the hourly rate of pay within those categories from $9.75 to an $11.25 rate of pay per hour. In the miscellaneous salary schedule, we do have a change in and around the responsibilities of the ELL Coordinator, that's English Language Learners, and the stipend associated, given the amount of work they do coordinating our ELL program and the services provided to our ELL students, making a recommendation that the stipend be increased from $1,500 to $3,900. And then the last change within those schedules would be to the extra-duty salary schedule related to school stores at Liberty High School and Liberty North High School to be able to capture a stipend for employee supervision of the students working within those two capacities, the store at Liberty High School, but then the store at Liberty North High School under column L. So with that said, you'll recall the adjustments and the changes looking ahead to next year in terms of allowing for vertical and horizontal movement on the schedule with an estimated total cost of $1,443,734, enhancing the certificated salary schedule by adding $1,000 to each cell at a cost, an estimated cost of $887,710. In addition to that, we've mentioned focusing on deepening our substitute teacher pool, as well as adding two more full-time float positions or emergency positions that would take us from 10 full-time substitutes to 12 full-time substitutes as an estimated cost of $72,698. And then the final thing that we added was some language in modifying board policy GCBA in respect to allowing teachers to regain their step progression as they move from the bachelor's 15 column to the master's column. All of this information then is utilized to reflect the budget discussion in the budget document that you'll see in draft form later on in our conversations this evening. With that said, we present those changes, as well as the recommendation as discussed back in April to you as it relates to our 2017-2018 staff salary recommendations.
So normally we vote on this in the commish, and then it's in the budget that we're presenting in June. It'll be in the budget.
It's currently in the budget document.
And that's not going to change, we're not going to get to it in case we don't approve this.
Correct. If you would choose not to approve anything, I would pull it out and redo for June.
Okay. I'm sure it will be approved. One-two punch in the same minute. Right up. Thank you. Numbers across lots of boxes that add up pretty quickly.
They do. Into the numbers.
But put us where we really need to be.
Absolutely.
More closer to where we need to be.
Any other questions or recommendations? Okay. So Epic Calendar... Oh, we have a motion. And recommend a motion as I move the board adopt the 2017-18 salary recommendations and compensation plans as presented.
I thought we were waiting until next month to do that. But you said we were waiting.
No, just the one piece, really.
The only piece you're waiting on is the final report from the Administrative Salary and Welfare.
Oh, I thought you said you wanted to wait until that was finalized before we get on with it.
No, so everything else would be included in this motion. That would be a separate motion that followed in June.
Okay. Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now the Epic Calendar.
We have a revision that we're needing to make to the Epic Calendar for the 2017-2018 school year, and in essence, what we're requesting that the board do this evening is to restore May 11th as an attendance day for students on the calendar that was previously adopted earlier this spring. Long story short, DESI requires that a day of separation exist between the regular school term and the beginning of summer school, which typically would not be an issue in any other school unless it were Epic. And that what we see happening at Epic, because they have a longer school year, in essence, they're relatively close to all year-round school, what's taken place is that at the conclusion of the Epic Calendar, you would have that day off, and then you would start summer school. It's problematic because as a school district, in the event that you have inclement weather makeup days for Epic, any of those days that would be beyond the 11th would actually fall into summer school, but that would actually have to be captured as makeup days associated to the regular term. And so the easiest solve, as we've worked with academic services on this and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, would be for us to restore May 11th as an attendance day, monitor inclement weather over the course of the year, and then whenever it falls, once those inclement weather days are made up satisfactorily both to the district, but then also to DESI, then that following day would actually be a day of... then also to DESI, then that following day would actually be a day of separation in which we could not recoup or report the attendance for that particular day to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They require a reporting buffer, so to speak, for lack of a better term. And so the recommendation would be to restore May 11th as an attendance day for students, and then the rest of the calendar would be the same in respect to what we saw earlier in the spring semester and what was provided to the Board of Education. That will solve our issues in terms of the attendance reporting requirements. At face value, it won't impact the staff, it won't impact students, parents won't see a notable change at all. It's strictly in how we report information to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Okay?
So I move the board approved the revised 2017-18 Epic Elementary School Calendar. Second. If there's no discussion, Senator?
Scott?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
A.J.
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Long Range Planning.
We wanted to give you an update on where we're currently at with the Long Range Planning process. This too has been an ongoing conversation going on for a little bit longer than a year now. We've had success in presenting various phases of the Long Range Facilities Master Planning process to groups that include our Vision 2020 team, our Strategic Leadership Team, the board level, as well as a couple of community engagement opportunities. But wanted to turn it over to Mr. Anderson to share where we're currently at, but then also kind of foreshadow where we're heading into the summer as well as the start of the fall.
Sure, thank you. So as Dr. Tucker mentioned, we are progressing through the fourth of five phases for the Long Range Master Plan, and we're in the process of culling through a series of options. And I think it was last month when Kevin Nelson was in front of you and presented, I believe, six or seven options. And so we're in that process of culling that down. We've met, as Dr. Tucker mentioned, with District Leadership Team, Strategic Leadership Team, Vision 2020, in going through that process. The plan is to bring this back in front of you at the June 5th study session, where Kevin can spend a little bit more time processing through where we're at now, which is after going through those other committees, we're down to about two or three options. And so the idea here is to kind of get you grounded in terms of where we're at before we break for the summer. As we roll out of the summer, that's when we will present these two or three options to the larger community. We'll have some form of public input sessions to cover that section off with them. And then shortly thereafter, into September, October, the idea would then be to bring it back to Vision 2020, Strategic Leadership Team, District Leadership Team, and really start looking at that one option, which then becomes the Phase Five, which is the last phase, and that is the actual plan that would then be adopted. So that's where we're at, kind of along that timeline. Once that last phase, that last, that actual plan is adopted, we would again share that back out with the larger community, and then look at putting together an actual construction plan potential and phasing out some scope and projects that would then potentially inform a 2018 no-tax increase bond issue, which again is to be determined, but that's the track run right now. So a lot more to come, many opportunities for input from the community, but we're getting closer to wrapping up the five phases. And the other thing I just mentioned is the timing of this is important and relevant in that the demographer's report is due this summer, and so that really helps us kind of tie in and finish this off. So this taking the summer off is, makes sense in accordance with the overall plan.
And when did you say the final plan would be presented, about what point?
It'd probably be a September, October timeframe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any additional questions, Mr. Anderson? Important work, look forward to talking about it at the work session. So the budget.
I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to come to the podium, and as we mentioned previously, a lot of effort and time has already been taken, I think, in the course of the last several meetings and months, study sessions and our regular meetings to get us to where we're at this evening. You'll note that under statute requirement is that school districts present a draft budget document this time of year to the Board of Education. Of course, it won't be finalized until our concluding June meeting and then take effect July 1st. As with any budget document, as soon as it is approved, the next day it changes. And that we want to ensure that we're up to date and utilizing the best information that we have available. So we'll turn it over to Cindy, appreciate her and her team, Audit and Finance Committee, and many principals and directors and others that have been involved in this process this year.
Absolutely. I could say what he said and go sit down, and based on your introduction, maybe I should, huh? No. What we have posted for you tonight is the preliminary budget document. I do not anticipate that it will change much, if any at all, from today until June, based on the information that we have. So what I want to do with you tonight is to visit what we did in March and April, hit the high points, let you know what changed, and look at just a couple of informational pages out of the book, because you have heard the majority of this information, other than the changes in March and April. So there should not be anything too surprising in this presentation for you. Budget process, we talk about this briefly every year. We set our target goals because that drives what we set our revenues and expenditures at for five years. Revenues primarily are not something that is given to us other than by the state, so in historical value. So we don't have much wiggle room in that. Expenses, we work hard with all budget managers to meet their needs, and like Dr. Tucker said, all budget managers, directors, supervisors, executive team leaders are heavily involved in the budgeting of the expenditure process. We have many eyes involved on that process. Then we bring the budget to you in May and June for final approval, and then in August we will set the tax rate, which could have somewhat of an implication on our document as well. Just like you drive a car off the lot, it's used and outdated, this budget is much the same. It's already changed since we posted the document on Friday, which is to be expected as new information comes in. We have updated information, but we had to land at some point. Fund balances. This is just a little snapshot of the types of fund balances we have, who helps establish that range, and why the ranges are established. We know for operating funds, we like to have somewhere between an 18% to 20% fund balance. We set that with your help. That is largely due to meet cash flow requirements in October, November, and December to pay the bills when our cash flow is at its lowest, because we get the majority of our revenue in January with property tax payments. Debt service is set by the Missouri State Auditor, and we go through the state audit filings in August that helps us determine what that balance should be. And then the capital fund, we would like to keep around a $3 million balance in that for emergency maintenance and repairs. We will dip down a little bit below that next year at the current point, but not enough that I'm concerned, but $3 million is a nice resting point for that. This is a little bit of a picture of where we are today and five years forward, as well as some history. This is going to make me sad the year that I have to take '08 and '09 off, because that really presents the picture of how far we've come. Some of you have been around that long and know the history behind that and the strides that we have made to get to where we are today. With the 18% to 20% goal, we are sitting projecting to be slightly, quite a bit above that actually at the end of this year. And that's due to the budget directors just being really wise with their dollars and spending them according to what they need, and just being good budget managers, as well as some unexpected revenues. But you'll see when we get down to '21, '22, we are back down to 18.25%, and that allows us to, in the years between now and then, to potentially add more staff, to add programs, to add enhancements to salary schedules, depending on what the leadership decides the priorities of the district in the next five years are. And so this is just a historical picture, and you'll note that in '09, we dipped to a low of 11.87%. That was the year we had to borrow money to make payroll. And so by keeping an 18% fund balance at a minimum, we will currently guarantee that we do not have to borrow money to make payroll, which is not prudent use of our funds, so that's where we always want to be. This is the overall picture of all funds in the general budget summary where we are proposing to end up, projecting to end up for '17 and projecting for '18. Just a snapshot, you don't very often see all funds together. We talked primarily about general student activity and special revenue, which make up operating. So those are the funds you see most often, talked about for our fund balance and operating Let's start by taking a look at our operating projection revenues tonight to get into the meat of what we wanted to talk about. We are still counting on a projected 5% growth in assessed valuation. I have not been told any differently. We will get our preliminary numbers in June, so we will know how that looks a little better at that point. The state, we took the SAT up to 6,200 for FY '18 and estimated to finish in FY '17 at 6,180. That could still change. 6,200 is still short of a fully funded budget of 6,241, but being conservative, a fully funded budget will only happen in the state if all of the revenue comes in. That makes up that number. So by using 6,200, we are still fairly conservative at that revenue amount. And it appears that most of my constituents are using that number as well. That was a number that was thrown out at Moazfo by DESI as perhaps a middle ground to use. So we have upped our revenue projections to the 6,200 SAT. I wanted to tell you that the total budget looks like this with the revenue picture. And from March, when we first talked about revenue, we have had $3 million increase in revenue added to the budget. So that accounts for Proposition C changing from the state revenue, some stadium revenue from contracts that we did not know we had at that point, surtax and in lieu of tax are going up, student activity increased in revenue, and we made some other minor adjustments based on the revenues that we received from March till this month. So just making a more realistic picture, that accounted for about $1.4 million in the local sources. The state, by bumping up the SAT from 6,180 to 6,200, accounted for about $966,000 more revenue. And federal, we had some allocations to title programs that we became aware of. They are slow to come in, but we added an additional $223,000 in revenue for title programs. And we also will be selling off our MacBook computers from our first lease, and a very, very conservative estimate right now was to add $500,000 for the sale of those devices, depending on the state and the usage and the wear and tear on them. That could be cut by trade. Dr. Mr. Katzer was not comfortable with much above a $500,000 revenue for that. So those are the biggest changes for the revenue and why we added $3 million from March to today. And so your new revenue assumptions will look like this. Some of them did not change. Assessed valuation increased 5%. Collection rates stayed the same. Levy currently is the same. State adequacy target went from 6,180 to 6,200. Prop C was 984 in March. We bumped that up to 985 based on the state information. Dollar value modifier did not change. Federal estimates, as I indicated, changed slightly with better information. And then as always, once the new year rolls around, as we get better information, we will provide you budget amendments to make corrections to what we know at that point. So that revenue increase now is $5.2 million over current year FY '17 revenues, so an increase of $5.2 million in operating revenue. Just a little history here, just to show you, we still are heavy on residential assessed valuation, which is what pays the majority of our taxes. That's the top blue bar. The agriculture is red. It is just a very fine line on the bottom of each of the years, followed by the commercial and the personal property. So just a little picture to let you know that does not change much. Historical assessed valuation data, the most notable thing about this was in 2016, we reached the $1 billion mark before TIF. And you've seen this slide before showing the assessed valuation trends in a different way. Also, I wanted to show this to you right now in the projection, the five-year projection document, these are the demographer figures that we are using. When, July, or at the point we get the new demographer data updated, then these numbers will most likely change, which will also change our projection document, because our revenue is built on increasing student numbers based on the demographer data that is provided. So you will see those estimates listed on the projection document, so those will change as well when we get better information. Expenditure-wise, we can look at this. The biggest pieces of this, you already know, we talked about already tonight, the funding the salary schedule, vertical and horizontal movement, enhancing the certificated salary schedule, allocating funds to increase substitute teachers, and I also have built in here the administrator salary corrections that you will see put before you in June. If you choose not to approve those at that time, we will pull those back out with a budget amendment in probably September when we run employee cost projections to true-up all salary schedules at that point. So I wanted to see a true picture, that's why I went ahead and put all of the salary schedule adjustments that will be presented to you at one point or another. So I don't anticipate Evergreen will change their numbers, just the chapters one through four, as Dr. Tucker indicated, with some details in there. So those are included in there. We also, last month, or yes, last month, I projected a 9% increase in medical, dental, and vision. We had a high utilization in March, so I bumped that up to 15%. According to Holmes-Murphy, we could experience a 15% increase in medical, dental, and vision. So I went ahead and built that in. I would rather have that in there and have to take it back out than not have it in there and bump it up in September, October, when we get those rates adjusted.
That was a change since last time we saw this?
Yes.
How did that affect the bottom line?
The change was...
Fun balance.
It was small. It, I think it was approximately $300,000 additional, because I already had budgeted 9%. And I only have to budget in this document for half of a year because...
We're talking about less than a half of one, one-half of 1%?
Mm-hmm.
So fund balances wouldn't have been...
Not, not...
Changed by any more than that?
No.
Yeah.
But I still would like, wanted it in there to...
I agree.
To see where we were.
Yep.
And here's your picture of the total budget, and you will notice that the expenditure budget is $220 million this year. That is much higher than you're used to seeing simply because of the payoff of the 2008 series refunding, which will occur in March. And here then are your new assumptions. I also needed to point out, at the time I built this document, the additional FTE was looking to be 15.35. It has since come back down to about 12.83. We originally budgeted for 10. We've had some needs that we really needed to address, so this is a little bit high, but with the ins and the outs, I'd rather, again, be a little bit conservative by budgeting a little bit too many people than what we actually will need. We'll bring that back down again in September if it does not poke back up to 15.35. But that's where it was at the time I had to land this document. So that's five FTE over what we budgeted, two over what I really thought was going to happen. So I think we're in a fine place there. So that shows us a net operating expenditure increase of $5.3 million. That's 4.1% increase over FY '17 expenditure balance. And the last slide I have for you is just the capital and major repairs. This hasn't changed maybe slightly. $10,000 were added into FY '18 for some unexpected expenditures that needed to be added. And I think Mr. Anderson talked with you about that at the study session in depth, a little bit more about this plan, so it did not vary significantly. So it did not vary significantly. So that's our changes. That's where we are. Like I said, I don't anticipate that the document will change much, if at all. And we will let you know if it does again in the same fashion that we did tonight. So that's where we are. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Lots of detail that has to come together to make it all balance out.
It is a lot of details, a lot of work, and I really appreciate Jim Loney and Tony Hayer. They, I could not do this without them, and they do a fabulous job. They really make this stuff happen and do good work. It's a lot of work.
Well, you get to pull it all together, but thank them for their work.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
So next month, we need to approve...
You'll have two more touchpoints, first of which being at our June study session on June 5th, which we may have some additional conversation around budget for next year and then finalizing it on June 19th with our regular monthly board meeting. So it takes effect until I want us to move on.
All right. Contracts and purchases are next up.
We have several categories of items captured under 9.02, all of which are informational purpose only. And so we're providing this information to you for review on first read, and then action will follow once we enter into the month of June of our regular monthly meeting. So the first series of items are contracts. There are several contracts, primarily of which are from academic services. And you can see the department associated to it, the description of the contract, the term associated with the contract as well, and then finally the fiscal note that's tied to that as well. In addition to contracts for first read, you have an emergency maintenance item that we provided a description of that falls under Board Policy DJF-1 that allows for the district to move forward with emergency items so long as we notify the Board of Education on such matters. So recently, we had an emergency maintenance situation that necessitated response in the middle of the night at Ridgeview tied to a leak at a drain that was underground outside of the building. And so our maintenance and grounds crew, operations, Mr. Anderson and his team, all responded in the middle of the night. And consequently, we were able to resolve the matter and start school that morning, really without a hiccup. And so we wanted to make you aware of that. What will follow for approval in June, once all of the invoices are in and everything's finalized, we'll bring that to you for final approval. So we just wanted to make you aware of that situation and then let you know that formal action will follow for the board approval in June. And in the last category of items, we have several sponsorship agreements that are provided to you, associated to the building Pride District Activities Complex and that campaign. So I believe you have five sponsorship agreements that are presented to you again for first read with final approval to follow sometime later in June. Anything to add on any of those items, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you.
Okay. That would then conclude item 9.02.
All right. Moving on to construction management.
I want to turn that item over to Mr. Anderson and associate the bids tied to Universal Construction for the activities complexes.
Yes, thank you. Before you tonight, there were, or there are, a total of nine bid packages related to construction-related activity for both Liberty North, Liberty High activities complexes. Of those nine bids, we're going to ask that you accept eight of them. There's one, the ninth, that is for the bleacher install. We only had one vendor on that one, and so, and it came in much higher than we had expected. So we're going to put that one, actually currently is back out on the street for bids. We're expecting to have a couple additional bids come in, likely to have that in front of you at the June, our fifth session for consideration. The other thing I'd point out is, in all this work, this is everything but the one last remaining piece, and that's the concession or convenience building, the restrooms and concessions. That will likely come in front of you towards the end of the summer. We had to put that one on the back burner for design purposes and engineering purposes so we could get this initial package out so we'd have a better chance of having the facilities open for the start of the fall season. So a couple things that I would just point out, the bids right now that are in front of you, these would be at not to exceed rates. We already are, we are already having some pretty good success in working with the various vendors to value engineer various components of this work to reduce the cost. I would say that because of some of the time constraints in putting the plans out for bid, we weren't able to do one last review to cull down and revise some of the work on the plan. So it was much more robust than I think anybody in our internal team had envisioned. So we put out there more than we ever really had wanted to be bid upon. And so we're working through that in addition to, as I mentioned, value engineering around some of the other things, in terms of amount of concrete fencing, some of the low voltage and electric work, grading work and so forth. And I think we expect to have some good success in bringing that number down. The other thing that we learned, and this has been confirmed on a couple occasions now by Archie with Universal, is that the development activity out in the community is really picking up. This is in the KC region. And so we're seeing across the board, he's seen across the board, costs going up. And so with those two items, the amount as it's at now is, we're a little over budget, but we're making some good strides. And since we have the concession building to come forward here yet this fall, we're pretty confident that, working with the value engineering with the present packages and then really thinking hard in terms of what that concession building looks like, we're going to come in really close to that 6.4 million projected number. So we feel confident in that. We'll certainly keep you informed as we kind of move further in the design process, but that's the target. The, you know, one example, well, I won't bother, if there's questions, I can give that. Mentioned that June, we'll have the bleacher install project construction, assuming these bids are accepted tonight. We'll likely see some mobilization beginning as early as tomorrow. We're still cleaning up, working through some issues with the city on permitting, but are confident that we can get those things ironed out so that we can get to work here as early as this week next and as we roll into June. And I would just also point out that the expectation is that we'll come in front of you at some point in June, once the campaign wraps up, once all bids basically except concessions are in hand, we know the true value of the work to date. I think that's where we can really flesh out that funding plan, that financing plan that we've talked a little bit about to date. So that's going to be a really important last piece as to how it all comes together as we, once we start getting bills. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Got a couple. How much, how many in-kind bids are we getting? Are we getting about what you thought we'd get? Or are we getting much in that area at all?
We did not. The only thing really of note included in the bids was Brown Excavating. We had to be careful with how we structured into the bidding process, and so we had to work real carefully in the language. And what we received, in effect, was a deduct. And so they had their true bid, their true competitive bid, and then we're...
And we'll take this much off for a donation?
They said we're going to lap off, reduce by $50,000 in recognition of what we want to do and contribute towards the campaign. That was really the only one of note. Yes.
But we're evaluating those bids against other bids?
Correct.
At the total amount? Or how's that work?
Well, it's by package, right? So like on the, on the site work, which of Brown is one of them, Brown is the selected preferred bidder, they're also the low bidder. But we evaluated their bid against their competing bids that were after that batch of work.
Okay.
On a second team?
Yeah, I think so. I think we're... The other, the other thing, I'm, I don't know that I'm concerned about it, but we're rightly focused on the right chunks of the project. Are we, the entry, and this community has come together so well over the last several months, I'm worried that we're the entry plaza and kind of what we've committed to people, that they will see when they come through these stadiums. Is that kind of on the radar at some point? Or is that, I want to make sure that didn't just fall off to the side and that we haven't made promises to people. And then I want to make sure we're, I don't know if we will, I just want to break it up here and make sure we're focused on that recognition piece as much as we said we were going to be.
Right. So yes, we're, in fact, we, there's some emails flying back and forth today on that point. So we have...
Not for me?
No, no, no.
Okay.
With the, with the architects.
Oh, okay.
In Miles Media. So the, we, and we set the design, which is now as part of the bid package, we've set the design for that entry plaza. So we have some of that detail ironed out. We just don't have a good refined perspective shot. So you can see the plan, you can't see this. And so they're working on shoring that up to go back with those donors and firm that up. I think it's, it's going to meet the spirit of what was initially envisioned. It might be a little bit tuned down a little bit, but I think it's going to be pretty close to what was envisioned.
Okay. Yeah. It's, it's the face of the project in my mind.
Right.
So I'm sure we're meeting the commitments.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I, I'm sure that you have heard this. I have heard from the community, a pretty strong sentiment, those who have donated. And for those of you who are normally aren't going to be shocked that I'm going to say this out loud, but the message I've gotten is, make sure that it honors the spirit of our donation and don't cheap out. Were the words that I got. So...
That's where I'm at. We have not talked about this, but that's kind of where I'm at as well.
So I want to say that again.
We've heard it, we've heard it as well repeatedly. And I think it's, as has been the case with this project from the very beginning, it's that balance, balancing act of, of, you know, a good, strong, sustainable project that's well-built, we can all walk away from feeling very proud about, but not extravagant.
Extravagant.
And so I feel pretty confident that we've, we've hit that proper middle ground. Now, I think the challenge is, is we're putting, for the first time really, those final details on it. And so we're very cognizant of making sure that any of that value engineering or changes does not sacrifice against the original vision of the space.
There. That's where I'm looking for it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Anderson?
Remove the board to approve the bids as recommended by Universal Construction for the Activities Complexes and reject bid BP number 113, grandstand slash bleacher install.
Second?
Scott?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Reports from the administration.
First off, item 10.01 is our academic services report. So as Dr. Quorum makes her way to the podium, I did want to share with the Board of Education and our audience this evening that this will be Dr. Quorum's last regularly scheduled monthly board meeting. She'll be with us at our June study session, but she has a pretty good excuse in July, in the month of June, in that she will actually probably be on the beach during that time we're meeting and our board meeting, exchanging vows. So we, we will let her do that. And then, as you all know, she is also leaving and departing to join the Lee Summit School District team, so wish her well. I just wanted to give that information to the board as well as express our appreciation to Dr. Quorum for her service over the course of the last three years. So with that said, we'll come over to you.
Well, certainly from a personal standpoint, a thank you to each of you and your leadership in Liberty. I have grown tremendously in both leadership and innovation and my thinking and growing that elementary team as well. A wonderful team of leaders who will continue amongst some great leadership in academic services. So the benefit is that we're still Liberty residents, and the benefit is I have some great connections through the academic services. So I'm excited to be able to connect continually with Becky and Beth and Julie. And so I know that we'll have a wonderful partnership just right down to 91, too. So looking forward to that. So thank you, thank you for that, and thank you for your leadership on the last three years, too. So as far as board reports, a, another appreciation and thank you, we do have program evaluation for college career readiness and community partnerships. So that was very in-depth, and we appreciate the work that Colleen Jones does in a variety of ways of connecting with the school district and with the city. So we very much appreciate that. If you have any questions, I can help answer, or she is here to be able to answer them tonight also. We also, in our report, have many celebrations. If we listed all of the wonderful things that were happening pre-K-12 this week and last week with the conclusion of school, you would be here all evening reading those exciting celebrations. So we highlighted just a few with our Instant Challenge Day with Epic and Shoal Creek and Kellybrook. We also talked a little bit about Rotary Readers, and there's a little bit of further information with our Girls on the Run. So some exciting activities that have happened and are currently happening and will continue for tomorrow. We also have a very exciting time in Liberty, starting on June 1st. If you don't know what it is, you're missing the boat, because we have one of the largest, and we think possibly the largest, summer school in the state. So we will begin on June 1st with our high school summer school. It runs June 1st to June 28th. And then elementary and middle school is June 5th through the 29th. We are up 40, or I'm sorry, 53 students. And there is a very good report in your information as well with summer school. We have 4,736 students so far and 393 teachers that are employed during that time. So it is exciting to be able to say we provide district transportation, a breakfast and a lunch program with optional before and after-school care. So that not only extends our learning, but it also extends the assistance with families in continuing that learning process throughout the summer. So an exciting time that we just get to continue to have with tomorrow being the last day of school. Any questions that I can answer for you?
I just had one question. Looking through the report under 2017, 2018, elementary co-teaching and team teaching classrooms?
Yes.
The second sentence says, "The following schools and classrooms have completed the framework and discuss elements," but I didn't see them...
That was on a list. I can get that to you ahead of time. We used this from your Friday board report the week before that had the list. So either that or I'm happy to send it to you.
I'll just look back in the report.
Sure. Yes, happy to send it to you. We have seven classrooms that will be co-teaching next year.
Yeah, great. Yeah, I read that. I just didn't realize that went back.
Yeah, I didn't, and I didn't realize that we had transformed that and didn't add, didn't make that change.
Just proves to you that I read it.
Thank you. See, there you go.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions for Dr. Quorum?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Quorum. 10.02 then is our finance report. Ms. Cindy Sullivan?
Hi. I have a couple of things for you tonight. One donation to recognize, a monetary donation in the amount of $1,864.87 donated by Dr. Paul and Dr. Melanie Libby to assist in the remodel of the teacher's lounge at Manor Hill. We thank them very much for their consideration. And also to let you know that Audit and Finance Committee did review documents this month. I have no questions for you. We have a live meeting on June 12th, and they will be putting their final stand of approval on the budget document as well. So come join us if you have a free meeting. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Cindy? Okay. 10.03 then, Human Resources Report, Dr. Boboar.
Thank you very much. I'd like to highlight just a couple of things out of the report that was uploaded. The first one of note is with regard to our screenings. You see a couple extra pieces of data there that I've asked Rebecca Fisher to compile for us, and that's our completion rates. 82% completed the screening, 78% completed the HRA, and 60% have accumulated their 3,000 points. If Dallas were here, I'd ask him if he's completed his 3,000 points. And Izzy, have you completed your 3,000 points? State champion. The other thing I'd like to highlight out of the report is with regard to the new teacher induction program. This is really the work of Dr. Westfall and her innovations and learning coaches. They do an incredible job, I think, helping our new teachers get acclimated and onboarded and have a successful, really, first and second year. What I want to highlight specifically, it's not mentioned in the report, is they did have a culminating activity just a couple days ago where they brought all the first and second year teachers together in a room, invited the superintendent and cabinet-level administrators to go around and kind of debrief them on their year. And it was a great opportunity to hear, you know, from them directly on the year that they had, what encouraged them the most, who invested in them over the course of the year, who was providing amazing support, and it just gave them a chance to reflect and talk about the people in their, over the course of their year who have meant the most to them as beginning teacher. It was very good, actually, a couple of days that we did the event, elementary and secondary included in that. So I just want to publicly thank Dr. Westfall for her commitment to, to those new teachers and also the innovations and learning coaches that devote so much time and attention to them. Finally, our staffing update. You see listed on there 79 separations in the report. I have an update on that. We've filled four more positions, so instead of 66, we have 70 of the positions that are filled, but we have three more resignations that we've received. Yeah, I didn't, and I didn't realize that we had transformed that and didn't add, didn't make that change.
Just proves to you that I read it.
Thank you. See, there you go.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions for Dr. Quorum?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Quorum. 10.02 then is our finance report.
Hi. I have a couple of things for you tonight. One donation to recognize, monetary donation in the amount of $1,864.87 donated by Dr. Paul and Dr. Melanie Libby to assist in the remodel of the teacher's lounge at Manor Hill. We thank them very much for their consideration. And also to let you know that Audit and Finance Committee did review documents this month. Have no questions for you. We have a live meeting on June 12th, and they will be putting their final stamp of approval on the budget document as well. So come join us if you have a free meeting on June 12th. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Cindy? Okay. 10.03 then, Human Resources Report, Dr. Volar.
Thank you very much. I'd like to highlight just a couple of things out of the report that was uploaded. The first one of note is with regard to our screenings. You see a couple extra pieces of data there that I've asked Rebecca Fisher to compile for us, and that's our completion rates. Eighty-two percent completed the screening, 78% completed the HRA, and 60% have accumulated their 3,000 points. If Dallas were here, I'd ask him if he's completed his 3,000 points. And Izzy, have you completed your 3,000 points?
State champion.
The other thing I'd like to highlight out of the report is with regard to the new teacher induction program. This is really the work of Dr. Westfall and her innovations and learning coaches. They do an incredible job, I think, helping our new teachers get acclimated and onboarded and have a successful, really, first and second year. What I want to highlight specifically, it's not mentioned in the report, is they did have a culminating activity just a couple of days ago where they brought all the first and second-year teachers together in a room, invited the superintendent and cabinet-level administrators to go around and kind of debrief them on their year, and it was a great opportunity to hear, you know, from them directly on the year that they had, what encouraged them the most, who, who invested in them over the course of the year, who was providing amazing support, and just gave them a chance to reflect and talk about the people in their, over the course of their year, who have meant the most to them as a beginning teacher. It was very good, actually, a couple of days that we did the event, elementary and secondary included in that. So I just want to publicly thank Dr. Westfall for her commitment to, to those new teachers and also the innovations and learning coaches that devote so much time and attention to them. Finally, our staffing update. You see listed on there 79 separations in the report. I have an update on that. We've filled four more positions, so instead of 66, we have 70 of the positions that are filled, but we have three more resignations that we've received, so that's up to 82. So four steps forward, three steps back. We'll get, we'll get that, filled up 13 positions remain to be filled on the list. It's actually 12 now with, with those changes. All of that's on pace with where we typically are this time of year, so nothing too dramatic there. That's all for my report. You have any questions? I would like to entertain that.
And Dr. Volar. 10.04 then, Operations Report, Mr. Anderson.
Two items I'd like to reference tonight. One, a little bit of a benchmark or milestone. We, as part of our synergistic relationship and, and energy management, we did hit that $2 million threshold for cost avoidance, so that's, that's good news. And then I'd also thought I'd just hit real quickly kind of at a high level of our, some of the work we're getting ready to, to begin here as we hit the summer season. Obviously, a lot of our folks on the operations side are beginning to mobilize and get ready, and this is in addition to the work with the activities complexes. So I shared this a couple of weeks ago, but we have about 170 requests, projects that we're moving forward with under the capital plan, totaling about $5 million worth of work. Asphalt, 125 grand, a lot of floor work, a couple hundred thousand dollars in floor work, concrete work, secure entries. We've mentioned that, I think, at the last meeting between the secure entries, and then the work at the Liberty Academy. We're talking nearly $700,000 work, over a million dollars in HVAC repairs and replacement, some equipment in cafeterias, over 100,000 roof work, over $750,000, and then some other miscellaneous items and projects. And then last, technology improvements totaling 1.3 million dollars. And so there's a lot of money being expended, a lot of work, but I just wanted to assure you that it's all very well thought through and coordinated and prioritized, and I think we feel very good about that as a team. So that is all taking place here, beginning now. So, and other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Anderson? The last item then, under Administration Reports, referencing my superintendent's report, it dawned on me that we're sitting here on the eve before the last day of school. So want to express appreciation to our faculty, staff, students, parents, community for the conclusion of another successful year. So barring release tomorrow and kids getting home on buses safely, we'll call it a wrap in terms of the 2016, 2017 school year. With that said, as our discussions at this table occur frequently, a lot of planning already underway for the start of next year, which will be here before we know it. Hate to say that, but it's true. In addition, in the items that were captured in my report, you have a communications program evaluation. Appreciate Dallas and his team for the work that they do in helping move our communication efforts forward, and we can certainly always improve upon the work that we do in getting our message and telling our story out to our community. As many of you know, the legislative session concluded earlier this spring, and we're working with a variety of associations to see what passed and what did not pass, and the implications on board policies, statutes, and so forth. So we'll be working with them and trying to make sense of all of that. You'll hear that report conveyed at our Legislative Leadership Event that we'll visit with MSBA and get a recap of the session in addition to a recap provided by the Cooperative School Districts of Greater Kansas City at their meeting later on in June. Another item tied to the superintendent's report that I wanted to share this evening is specifically related to an initiative that will appear on the ballot in August, on the August 8 election. We learned this morning that Clay County approved, as of this morning, initiative called Proposition 1 for Clay County Kids, and it does a couple of things. So it was approved this morning by Clay County unanimously to put an ordinance on the ballot to create the Children's Services Fund under statute. Statute allows for that to be created within counties. That'll be on the ballot August 8th for a vote of the, of our community. And it establishes a quarter cent sales tax to be able to create the Children's Services Fund for the children of Clay County. Underneath the provision, it could generate up to $8 million to be attributed toward students under the age of 19, specifically related to the services of meeting their needs tied to homelessness, and will help physical abuse as well as substance abuse and general neglect. We have an informational meeting that we've been invited to attend on May 25th later this week, so we'll be going to learn more about that particular program. It certainly could assist in meeting the needs of students within our community that fall within those categories. I think what they'll be looking for over the course of the next couple of months would be for Board of Educations to identify whether or not this is something that they want to get behind. So we'll go glean information from them, certainly relay that back to the Board of Education, likely to be a topic at our June study session as we dive a little bit deeper into the organs. We have a copy of the language, but certainly want to learn more as to the impact and really kind of the detail that will follow once the fund is actually put in place within Clay County. So that concludes my items, but would certainly open it up for any questions from the board.
So upcoming meetings are shown. The list has dwindled from a month ago when there was lots going on in May. Take a look at those, especially the study session and regular meeting in June. Any other clarification on those that we need? Order marks? Anyone else to share this evening? Two successful graduations and 700-some-odd, not odd.
Well, ask their parents.
Seniors going off into the world.
I do have a quick comment, and you'll have that, and that's just to recognize Dr. Adams and Dr. Jacobs. I've had several comments from people in the community about how lovely those communities are, and I know that you and your staff do a tremendous amount of work to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Any other remarks before we adjourn?
I move the board adjourn.
Scott?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.[1785.53]